Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our special council meeting for August 19, 2025, 6:04 PM. Roll call please.
Roll call. Councilmember Roth?
Present.
Councilmember Upal?
Present.
Mayor Pratim Samra?
Present.
Mayor Moran?
Present.
For the record, Councilmember Wallace is not in attendance.
Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can all please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members, please. Thank you, may be seated. At this time, we have citizen comments. This is for closed session. A closed or executive session of the City Council or the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the city of Livingston may be held in accordance with state law, which may include, but is not limited to, the following types of items: personnel matters, labor negotiations, security matters, providing instructions to real property negotiators, conference with legal counsel regarding pending litigation. The closed session will be, let's see, so we actually have item six, seven, eight. Under closed session, item number six is conference with labor negotiator, Government Code Section 5495-7.6. Labor negotiator Jose Antonio Ramirez, city manager, employee organizations is or are, clerical bargaining unit, police supervisory employees association, management confidential bargaining unit, Livingston Police Officer Association and Public Works and Parks unit for number six. Item number seven, we have conference with legal counsel. Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9, subdivisions D, Section two, and E, Section one. We have four matters in this item. And then item number eight, conference with legal counsel. Liability claims pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.95. Consideration of claim number FR102723. Claimant Marlene Aguilar seeks monetary compensation from the city for damages to personal property, in this case, a vehicle. Is there any citizen comments on the phone in regards to closed session items? Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber? I don't see anyone coming forward. Closing the citizen comments at 6:07, and at this time, we are going to retire into closed session, and we'll be back and report out. (Clerical bargaining) Here are none, coming back to the chamber. Any citizen comments in the chamber?[1782.10]
August 19 at 7:08, can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
We can all please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members, please. Thank you. May be seated. Brocco?
Brocco. Councilmember Roth?
Present.
Councilmember Opal?
Present.
Mayor Protim Semra?
Present.
Mayor Moran?
Present.
For the record, Councilmember Wallace is not in attendance.
Thank you. Mr. Mark, closed session announcements?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to discuss the items listed on the closed session agenda. Deliberation occurred, updates were given, no reportable action was taken. That concludes my report.
And we're going back to...
Yes, to discuss the balance of the items. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Council, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
On the check warrant, I would like to pull item number 13922. And I'd like to totally pull it off this agenda.
So...
13922.
Is there a question that you might have that might be able to be answered?
No, I'd just like to see some of the invoices on that, on this warrant, if I can, please.
So it would just be that particular item?
That's it.
And keep the rest. Okay.
Thank you.
Got it.
13922.
All right. Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, really quickly, Mr. Roth, whenever you get those invoices from staff, could those be forwarded to the rest of the Council, please? I'd like to take a look at those as well.
Yes. Anything else? Any other questions on any of the items? Zina? Okay, so this... Give me one second. All right, okay, so now... All right, okay, so next we have, I was trying to skip all over the agenda, I was like, we're done? I'm like, wait a minute, we've only been here for three minutes. Yeah, okay, doesn't seem right, okay. Okay, so next we have citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item not on the agenda. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening. Is there any citizen comments on any items not on the agenda? Anyone on the phone at 7:12? Here and now, coming back into the chamber, is there any citizen comments in the chamber? Seeing none, we're closing the citizen comments at 7:12. Next we have county supervisor announcements. Mr. G... Oh, go ahead.
Hello, good evening, councilmembers. I'm representing Supervisor Pacheco today. He wasn't able to make it, but he does send his regards. He just wanted me to share two quick little things. First off, he is looking forward to that tax revenue sharing meeting that will be held on September 8. And he just wanted to remind everyone that the Board of Supervisors meeting will be held on August 26. That would be all. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, he did text me. He said he was not going to be able to make it because he's not feeling too well. Please let him know. We all hope he gets better soon. Thank you. Next we have announcements and reports. City staff announcements and reports?
Yes, Jack.
I just have a quick one. This is going to be such a short meeting. I like handouts.
Thank you.
So I did have a reminder, you guys, the Sweet Potato Festival is coming up. We are looking for sponsors. We have put information out to all the growers and farmers. And we're just waiting on a response. But I thought that when people ask you what's going on at the Sweet Potato Festival, that this flyer would be good. It has the entertainment for every day, what they can expect when they get there. You know, people say, oh, we didn't know you had to pay to park, or we didn't know it was a dollar to get in, or whatever. But this pretty much talks about everything that's going to be going on. It's also going to be going out on the water bill and the traffic plan is on here, too, that PD has put together for us so that hopefully all the residents over there will know what streets to avoid and, you know, what the traffic flow is going to be. So, anyway, with that, I just wanted to hand that out. And if you guys have any questions, I'd be...
You want to share that the tickets went on sale?
Yes, the tickets did go on sale today. They are $30 for unlimited rides for a day. And then it's $35 if you buy them when you're there. So you get about a $5 saving. So if you have a bunch of kids, it'd be good to come get a few this paycheck, a few next paycheck, spread it out a little bit, keep the kids busy. So, anyway, we're excited. The camel's coming back. We've got a full-blown petting zoo that's going to be a lot of fun. The FFA, this will be their second year with their garden program. I think they call it grazing acres. So rather than it just be the life of a sweet potato, they're adding the farm life into the kids' zone. So it's going to be really fun.
Is the camel from Lloyd?
Yes. Yeah, it's a good camel, too. We have, it's all listed on here. We have on Friday night with the car show, Rearview Mirror. On Saturday, we have the Danny G Band. And then we have on Sunday, Banda Resiente, and everybody's locals. So we'll get to highlight all of our local folks.
I think, Jackie, I think he's looking for an opportunity to perform.
He might have an opening. You know, if you don't want to sing, the Lucha Libres are going to be performing every day.
You do not want me to sing on the stage or do any wrestling?
Well, I think that might be a matter of opinion.
Thank you, Jackie. Any other staff announcements or reports? Okay, city manager announcements and reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council. Just want to bring this item back up because we have to fill in some of the vacancies. One of them is the Measure V. So if anybody knows out there, if anybody might be interested in representing us on the Measure V through MCAG, we're looking for folks that can take on that responsibility. And then another one is the Measure L. I know that we, I think, two individuals applied. And I think we have three other slots available. And so, again, the Measure L committee, so if you guys know some folks, have them apply. They can get an application at City Hall, talking to our deputy city clerk, or they can go on the website and get that as well. Okay? The other items that I have, one, I just wanted to report out that we had an opportunity to catch up with Foster Farms. I'm still trying to catch the CEO and the COO, but was able to talk to some higher management. And we talked about a lot of different things, but one of the highlights that I wanted to give to council is related to the decommissioning of the industrial wastewater treatment plant. There's still work to be done. That is, the state comes out annually, and so we asked them if we can participate in the inspections when they come out. And it doesn't look like it's, not this year, for sure. And so we'll have a more robust report to council down the road. But Foster Farms wants to hand over the property as soon as possible. And, you know, we would like to look at other opportunities for that property. But right now, it's still in the decommissioning portion. The other item that I wanted to talk about is we have, we had a presentation at this last TRB meeting where the Merced County OES came out and gave a presentation on the disaster council. And so I'm going to ask them to come and make a presentation to council. It's a very important aspect that we all need to be participating in and highlighting some very important emergency services aspects. And then finally, please let Monica know if you guys are interested in attending the California Cities Conference in Long Beach this year. And if you are, so we can, you know, register you and things like, and that's it. Thank you very much.
I have a question. How big is that land on the wastewater, the industrial wastewater?
It's about, it's approximately about 100 acres.
100 acres?
Yes. And then within that 100 acres, you have the shooting range. And what else do we have out there, Anthony? That's it? Yeah, so just a series of different ponds in the shooting range. Yeah. And so right now, like I said, Foster Farms currently uses those ponds out there. And they've been in the decommissioning mode from at least 2012, 2011, when I got here.
So they've been working on it?
Yeah.
So based, good question. So it's been 1211, 1220, or 2012?
That doesn't mean that it hasn't, didn't start before. I just remember when I got here in 2011, around there, that was part of the process.
And according to the MOU, when were, what was the date that the city was more or less supposed to get it back?
Well, vaguely, I remember that, I believe it was going to be like 2015 is kind of the date that I remember, and we're in 2025.
Okay, so, yeah.
Yeah, and again, keep in mind that they have to return those ponds and that property to the original state that we basically provided them. And so, and then state monitors, and they grow, you know, different types of crops out there to mitigate some of the issues. But they're still finding, and they do a lot of monitoring. And so, yeah, that, all that has to be remediated.
Okay. All right, council. Any other questions? All right, thank you. All right, conflict of interest declaration. Members of the city council will declare an actual or apparent conflict of interest before discussions or decisions about any matter in which they are, or anyone with whom they have a close personal relationship could directly or indirectly benefit, or where such a benefit could be perceived. Is there any conflict of interest declaration in this council at this time? Seeing none, moving forward. Next we have the consent agenda. So items on the consent calendar are considered routine or non-controversial and will be enacted by one vote unless separate action is requested by a member of the public, the city manager, or city council member. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the public city council or city manager request that specific items be removed. Public comment on consent agenda items should be limited to three minutes per person, regardless of the number of items contained within the consent agenda. So currently, we do have items 1 through 11 under the consent agenda. Is there any questions on any items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to pull item 11 from consent.
For separate discussion?
For separate discussion, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we have requests for item 11 to be pulled for separate discussion. Anything else? So we do have items 1 through 10 for consent agenda. Is there any motions? Yeah, we're considering that we're only pulling the... Okay, so is there any motions?
Mr. Mayor, I made the motion. We approve the consent items 1 through 10 with the... Now watch me lose my warrant number. But holding off on the warrant number 13922 at a further date.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Mayor Pertham Samra. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by councilmember Roth. The roll call, please.
Roll call, councilmember Roth.
Yes.
Councilmember Opal.
Yes.
Mayor Pertham Samra.
Yes.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 4-0.
Thank you. So we have item... Item 11 for discussion and action. Consideration of a resolution, one, accepting the bid and awarding a contract to Loprest, a Division of Water Remediation Technologies LLC for the total bid amount of $1,408,672 for the supply of green sand filtration equipment for arsenic treatment, a well number 8A. And two, authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Staff recommendation, approve resolution.
I'll go ahead and take this because I pulled it. Council, if you could do me a favor, can you go to page 45 on your agenda packet, please? Page 45. This is not in the documents included for this item. This is for the TBS item that we just approved in consent. And it'll help understand why I pulled this item. So as you're getting to it, I'll kind of talk a little bit about what's on that page. You can see the quote we received from TBS for the contract that we awarded them earlier for pavement on Main Street. And we have a very clear itemized breakdown of every little thing that we're paying for. Thank you, Monica, this is very helpful. And the exact cost of those materials and those services. And I want you to compare what was provided by TBS to what was provided by Loprest, which is on page 238 of our staff report. So this is what we got from TBS. And then on page 238, this is all we received from Loprest. I do want to say, when I saw this item on the agenda, I was very happy to see that we have equipment for the purpose of filtration. I mean, if the fire station wasn't in as bad of a situation as it's been, I think we would all agree that clean water is by far the biggest request that we hear from the community. And so by no means do I have an issue with us moving forward to address that, especially given that we have money sitting around budgeted exactly for that purpose. However, when I see this, we are provided zero detail on exactly what's making up this $1.4 million cost. And Monica, if you could please go to page 253 of the staff report. So Loprest actually included a scope of supply, services that they'll be providing, plus the materials that we'll be paying for. And so I don't see why we would not hold them to the same standard of providing an itemized breakdown of these costs. I understand that we're still going to spend a lot of money on this. This is expensive equipment and services that we're paying for, and it's a dire need. I just want to make sure that we're not getting overcharged for this equipment. And we have no way of knowing that if we're not getting a breakdown of what's making up that cost. And so that's my reasoning for wanting to pull this for separate discussion. Ideally, I would like for Loprest to come back and provide an itemized breakdown, provide that to staff, and give our experts the chance to make sure that all the equipment that's included is at a reasonable price for what they're asking. I'm open to any discussion from council and or staff as it relates to that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? So if this were to be done, or maybe this is for city manager, what kind of timeline would that be? I mean, is it two weeks? Is it a month? Or how long would that be to actually break that down, you know, detail by detail?
Well, the answer is, we don't know exactly how long it's going to take them. However, we did put in that request, and we're hopeful that we're going to get it. What I would like to do, and I'll come back to completely answering your question, councilmember Roth. So what I would like to say is, first, I want to thank councilmember Upo for, you know, identifying this. And I think that it's important to share a little bit of context, and more information is always good. And, you know, we're open to openness and transparency. So I just want to put, give a little bit more detail and put some of these things in context. So when we, when we, when we try to compare, let me break it out into different categories. Number one, you have a materials contract, LUPSUM materials contract, which is what you have here. Then you have a, then there's a different type of contract, which is a construction contract. And then, and then you have, in addition to the construction one, you have what is called a... Let's see here. A services contract. I know I was missing one. So service contract, and then, and then you, and then, so what happens is, those are all different categories. And so these other contractors, you know, provided, you know, all these great detailed information. What makes, what makes this a little, even more, a little more difficult is that it's also done by industry standards. Okay? So the fact that this is being requested is something new, but again, not something that staff is opposed to requesting that information. And so we've actually asked for that. Now, in terms of urgency for this item, there is urgency. However, there's a lot of ways to remedy. One is, at this point, we can always have a special meeting and get all the information before council prior to that so that we can revisit this. A portion of this, or at least half of this money that was dedicated for this project is... money that was dedicated for this project is ARPA funding. And so it needs to be encumbered, you know, basically this year, by the end of this year. Now, this particular project incorporates different parameters. So for instance, one is, once they get awarded the contract, they have to do engineering and design. And then once, that's going to take, I don't know, I'm guessing maybe a month or so. And then after that, they have to do, you know, fabrication release. They have to, you know, get that, you know, fabricated. And then after that, you know, they have to get all the different supplies. And, and so all of that is a little tricky given what's going on now. However, we, we feel that we're going to be able to, you know, get this money encumbered this year. And so even if the project goes into 2026, as long as it's encumbered this year, we're okay. So I, I think that we, we have some time and we can, you know, continue to talk to Loprest to try to get that itemized list that Mr. Upal has requested.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the context. Do want to point out that we did go to bid for this on July 9th, first initial posting. Second posting was on July 16th. And the two bids, sorry, hold up, I'm on the wrong item. I apologize. I was back on the TBS item. So we opened this bid on August 6th. So, so it seems like Loprest was relatively responsive when it came to putting in their price. I don't see why they would run away from this contract, just because we're asking them to be more transparent. I would be shocked if they're going to turn down the potential of getting paid over $1 million, just because we're asking them to break down a cost. And I, I know we're looking at different industries here, but I'm sure folks have heard about getting hospital bills, not sharing what they're, not sure, being sure what they're paid for, paying for, then requesting an itemized breakdown, and all of a sudden, your cost might go down a little bit. And so I, I think it's important for us to do that due diligence and not let contractors get away with just presenting us a number. Because there's no knowing that the next folks that are going to come back and see what we've been approving are going to say, hey, these guys got away with not giving any detail. Why don't we put in an extra $100,000 charge if nobody's going to be looking at it? It is important to note that our engineer's estimate was fairly close to the number that Loprest provided. So I'm not concerned about us being extremely overcharged. However, process matters. And it's my opinion that we should require every contractor to go through the same due diligence. If council disagrees with that, you're more than welcome to approve this tonight.
The only thing I'll say is, again, reiterate that staff is not opposed to that. And we appreciate it. And Loprest has not communicated that they're not going to comply with it. And to your point, I wouldn't leave $1,404,000 on the table either. And so I don't know if there's anything that engineering wants to add at this point. But again, I think we have a little bit of, of leeway in terms of time. Because if the funds had to be totally expended by 2025, you know, I had to do a little research, and it, and if I'm not mistaken, council authorized these funds back in September of 2024. And so, so I was a little concerned about that initially. But as I dug in and talked to staff, it just needs to be encumbered by the end of the year. So that gives me some relief. Thank you.
Yeah. One more piece I'd like to add real quick. This, there's nothing against Loprest in any of my comments. If I was a contractor, I'd be doing the same thing. It's up for us to set the standard that we're going to look at, not for them. And if council's okay with that, I'd like to motion at this point to bring this item back as soon as we have an itemized breakdown of costs from Loprest.
May I?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Upal, just a question. If they get the information to you, say, within the next few days, I'm, I don't know. Are you open to a special meeting? Or would you still wait till September?
If it works with everybody else's schedule, I'm okay with that.
Okay, that's fine. To me, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to put on, agendaize it by September. Do you, Mr. Mayor?
No. Whatever council-
And, and, and Mr. Upal said, Councilman Upal said that if you have the information, and he's open to a special meeting, I am too, if that works out for everybody.
Okay.
Council, any other questions? So at this time, I will go out for public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone in regards to this item at 7:36? Hearing none, coming back into the chamber. Is there any public comment in the chamber? Seeing none, closing the public comment at 7:36. Moving forward, is there any additional comments, questions, motions?
I have a motion on the floor to bring this item back once we have an itemized breakdown of costs.
I will second that.
So we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Upal, second by Mayor Protam Samra. Roll call.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth.
Yes.
Councilmember Upal.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Samra.
Yes.
Mayor Modan.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 4-0.
Next, we have announcements and reports. City council members' announcements and reports. Mr. Roth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing to report right now. I do want to say that Councilmember Wallace's wife has been very ill. They are out of state right now. So if the community could offer some prayers to him and his wife, that'd be well accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Upal?
Just wanted to report that in the last couple of weeks, I've met with both folks from the Farm Bureau and MID to discuss items that I raised during our last discussion on the general plan.
Thank you. Mayor Protam?
Yes. Today, we had the mosquito abatement meeting. Mosquitoes are in full force now. Everybody probably knows about it. Once again, if you have any concerns, or if you need to have service, please call the Merced County Farm Bureau. I'm, I'm sorry, Merced County Mosquito- I'm sorry, I'm still thinking about Councilmember. Merced County mosquito abatement, they'd be more than happy to come out. There is no charge for the service. So, and then tomorrow, not tomorrow, but Thursday, I have the MCAG meeting. Thank you.
Just, thank you. Just a little bit of additional information in regards to the mosquito abatement process and how it'll be requested. And I learned this just a while back. It's, I cannot call for you because they gotta, they, they have to come and provide a physical address where the mosquito situation is happening. And then they need to come and, they, they need to be allowed into your property to kind of inspect it. And then once they inspect that one home or residence, then they, if they see larger, like they need to fog like the whole neighborhood, then they'll make that decision then. But I, or anybody else cannot call and say, well, can you come and fog this neighborhood? You know, they first got to come and do that inspection.
First of all, they won't do the entire neighborhood and let's say deem it to be necessary. However, if you and your neighbor call, and they will spray both homes, but they will let you know. But also, what I did do, and I always get these questions raised to me, they will be spraying our parks again. I had a lot of complaints with Gallo and others. So they should be coming out the next day or two for all the parks. And I will make sure that for our Sweet Potato Festival, that they do a spray that night before we start. I want to make sure that, you know, we're not having to fight mosquitoes. So we will do that.
Thank you. I just want to provide some information. I do believe Thursday, you guys have, or, or there's going to be the Traffic Safety Committee meeting in the chambers on, I believe it's Thursday at 2 o'clock here in the chambers, just for information. And then, I had some concerns shared earlier this week, I think it's a couple of days ago, with, and I saw on social media, it seems like there is people, obviously looking for opportunities to take advantage of other people, when they are pretending to be, I guess, agents authorized to provide food vendor information for the Sweet Potato Festival and others in the city. And then sometimes they pay like money ahead of time, and they get, you know, taken. And so just as a reminder, the, the only, and then probably Jackie can expand on this. The best way to get information about any vendors for any city events is to contact Recreation Department, or go onto the website, and then- Okay, so, so- Online, yeah. Zelle, or none of those apps. So it has to be done through the city's website. Anyways, just, you know, because people out there, they'll look for any opportunity to try and take money from other people. And so just, just be careful. And I want to continue to thank the residents for continuing to call with inquiries about sidewalks, about overgrown this, overgrown that, loose dogs on some street, or, and everything. I really appreciate it. But I, I do want to encourage people to also call City Hall, call PD, call Public Works, because it's also important for them to have and keep track of those calls. And that's how they can best service that area. So for instance, if someone's concerned about loose, large loose dogs on, I don't know, on any street, on Main Street, right? So call it in. So once PD or Animal Control sees that, you know, they are receiving a number of calls for a specific area, then they can figure out and go see what's going on, or Public Works, you know, broken sprinklers, or this, or overgrown trees, call it in. And then so they, you know, because a lot of times, you, the residents out there are the ones that are really helping us take care of things around the city, because we cannot see everything that is happening. So please, just, I, I, it's okay, just, just continue to reach out to council. But at the same time, I would like to encourage people to call the different departments, Animal Control, Public Works, Recreation, or just call City Hall, and they'll guide you in the right direction. But I, I think we have, Anthony, that wants to provide some additional information?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to do, inform council and the residents that our traffic committee meeting will be tomorrow at 2:00 PM at the conference room, City Hall.
So it is tomorrow, not Thursday?
Yes, tomorrow.
And it's going to be, so, okay, so it's not going to be here? It's going to be in the conference room?
Yeah, 2:00 PM at the conference room.
Conference room. So, so just come in to City Hall, and then they'll guide you. Just let them know that you're there for the Traffic Safety Committee meeting.
Yes. And we'll inform the front counter.
Okay.
Just to be on the lookout.
All right. Perfect. Thank you for that.
It is stated that it's going to be here.
Oh, it is going to be here?
It's stated.
So it is going to be in the council chambers?
And it is for tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
At 2:00 PM.
2:00 PM, yes. All right. So tomorrow in the council chambers, they'll have donuts and, no, I'm just kidding. No, no donuts. All right. That's it for me. Believe it or not, it's, next we have just council direction on future agenda items. Seeing none, let's go before they change their mind. Meeting is adjourned. Actually, we're going to go into, back into closed session, and we'll be back to report out. If you guys want to wait here for a few hours, not a problem. Meeting adjourned at 7:45.